Right. Okay. I am, good morning, everybody. I'm calling this meeting of the Public Safety Communications Task Force to order. It is eleven seventeen on March twentieth, twenty twenty four, and I'm Barbara Neal. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded and the recording will be posted on the task force webpage following the meeting. Let's start with a roll call of task force members. If you could verbally acknowledge your presence when I call your name, Jen Morrison.
I'm here.
Paul White.
I am here as well.
Okay, Mike Dungeons.
I am here.
Jim Mack.
Here.
All right, and did we have any other task force members join just now? Let's see. No, okay. All right, so also joining us this morning, of course, is Callie Odette as our administrative support person and our project management partners at Tel Aviv, Rick and Dom. And Rance and Phil will have an opportunity in a minute here when we get to that point on the agenda to introduce themselves again. Let's see, I do see a couple members or a member of the public that has joined. If you'd like to just state your name and any affiliation you care to share, I'm showing Jeff Burnham.
Good morning, Jeff Burnham, Springfield Police Department Chief of Police.
Morning, thanks for joining us. And that appears to be it for members of the public. So we will move on to approval of the agenda. The agenda was distributed to task force members by email. It's also available on our webpage. Do task force members have any changes to the agenda for today? Alrighty, hearing nothing, we'll consider the agenda approved. And we will move on to public comment. Typically, we allow about ten minutes for public comment. So I will ask our only public participant this morning, Chief Burnham, would you care to comment today?
I'm all set, thank you, just listening.
Okay, great. Excellent, then we will move on then to the next agenda item, which is system planning team introductions, which really we did last week, I'll note, and also kickoff presentation from our new partners at Mission Critical Partners. So I will hand things over now to you, Rance, at Mission Critical, and welcome, the floor is yours.
All right, well, thank you. Let me, I'm gonna share a screen so I can bring up my PowerPoint deck, so stand by. So hopefully we don't have any technical difficulties. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. First problem out of the way. All right, once again, my name is Rand Duffy. I actually am the assigned project manager for this project. Myself is on the meeting today and then Phil Sisk here, and I know you all are very familiar with Phil. Has spent a lot of time with you on getting it, getting us to this point. So today I am, and welcome to all the task force members and of course, the public and anybody else that shows up in the meantime for this. I do want to go over, like Barbara just mentioned, a lot of this information you probably have already seen, maybe twice, maybe three times at this point. But we do need to do, you know, this is our official, more or less our official kickoff to the whole thing. But there's a bigger portion of this, it's not so much about what we are going to go over because you have seen that. We do want to get some input and some feedback from the task force members. And as Barbara and I talked about yesterday, I hopefully she sent the homework assignment to the task force members. And that they realize there's going to be a question coming up here later on that we hopefully get some good input back from you all about what you want to see out of this. So getting into it, we are working with a person proving your emergency response outcomes for the specifically for the Vermont Public Safety Task Force and working on this statewide Public Safety Communications system planning. Topics today are listed there. We will, again, a lot of this information we had already seen, we're not going to dive deep into introductions at all because you've, you've met most of the project team again at this point. But we do want to emphasize that we are going to talk about that defining success and open discussion and open discussion also slash just questions that you have of me of us about the system planning, anything that you have that's related to that. But that's going to be more of our emphasis today is getting into those two pieces right there. And of course, at the end, we'll talk about how the next steps and what we're going forward from here. Again, high level brief, most of you know this, it was more generated for the, the public and anybody else who would attend, but Mission Critical Partners were leader in public safety and managed services for the public sector, primarily working in public safety and justice. Had over thirty-two hundred projects, we have a ninety percent retention rate, done work in forty-eight different states. We got two hundred plus subject matter experts in the public safety and justice world. And then our average experience averages out to about twenty-five years. So you have, you have a lot of, have a lot of support through the company and this project we're working on. More specifically on this project, we want to give you some background and again, I think it's something you guys have seen. But, and I know it came up as a question about how we worked with a lot of different government agencies. Barbara, you and I had that discussion yesterday about that question had come up. We'll answer some more of that specifically and get that information to you. But just to show you similar projects to this, this is obviously a snapshot of some projects, but and then also showing the wide range of places that we have worked between Texas and Maryland and Massachusetts and Arizona and Illinois. But these were more specifically chosen to show you previously and again that consolidation, regionalization studies, next generation nine one one. And again, our wireless component, the LMR, the microwave, and then of course CAD and RMS. So a wide range of background that we have already worked on in similar places and of the large nature of even Vermont's project, which is emphasized below. We've done assessments of regionalization projects, about fifty-three plus of those. And then again, on a state level, because you know, we even, you know, local regional projects are different, but state level gets to be a bigger, a bigger animal, so to say. But we have a lot of experience in those state level projects, at least thirty-three plus. On the team side, you, again, you have seen this slide before, here's the team. On the left side there is the project core team. And as we just mentioned, I am your, your project manager for this and Phil Sisk is also on the phone with us today. We're not going to go into full introductions again because I think you all know us at this point. The point of this is also there on the right, you can see that, yes, I am the project manager and I have Phil and I know you guys have met Bonnie and even Scott Neal in some previous meetings. But that's not the, that's, that's not where most, most of the team is going to be made up of various other people that you see on that organizational structure. And yeah, yes, I am the project manager, but I do not know all. And that is why we work as a team in this particular company. So whatever I don't know, there is a list of people that I can reach out to to grab that information depending on what, how it comes up or what information comes up at the time. So why are we here? Right out of your request, we're here to help the state of Vermont, more specifically, the Vermont Public Safety Communications Task Force. And we want to help you establish that statewide reliable, secure and interoperable public safety communication system, which also comprises of integrated nine-one-one call taking and regional dispatch systems. We know there's a lot of systems, we know there's a lot, there's, we had a discussion yesterday about the the difference with the PSAPs and the dispatch centers and we're aware of that and we know there's, sometimes there's differences in that. And we'll take that into consideration as we move forward with how the state of Vermont is currently set up. And then what we want to do, be able to give you some different models about how you could go to the future. But part of that, building that out is, is part of our charge is to make it as equitable and sustainable and universally accessible by everybody in the state. And I know that's your goals and that's also ours as well. To do that, a graphic that we have used quite a bit about how the communications ecosystem looks nowadays. And it's also where I want to break down each one of these where you start off with your voice and data against that. We're, we're past the days, even though it still occurs and people were past the days of the landline phone and you're calling nine-one-one from a landline in your, in your house or in your business, you know, nine, probably seventy or I would almost guess seventy-five percent, eighty or ninety percent of your call volume was coming from cell phones, most likely. And they called from nine-one-one to report their incident. We're all, all the way up to the point now of automatic crash notifications. I don't know if you're dealing with that as much going on in Vermont now. I know it's going across the country where someone has an automatic crash notification, you have to deal with that as a call. There's even to the point now that the wearable devices, if, if it, if it senses, senses something on your body is not right, it can automatically call nine-one-one for you as well. So all these things are going on as far as reporting the incident. But we need that information to come in and then to flow over to the communication center itself. Where you have, of course, your trained personnel in there to take the call, to process the call, analyze that information and make sure it gets out to the proper responders, which that part is where you deliver that through, where we have for many, many years, deliver that through your radio communication system, which still exists. Land mobile radio is still going to be a very important component of that. However, on top of that is a new, new services, you all have heard of FirstNet, probably have FirstNet, probably use FirstNet. That's another thing that's on, on top of the system and the land mobile radio is also still a major component of that. Along with all outside of FirstNet, there's all kinds of other cellular service providers to be able to deliver data out to the responders themselves. And then past that, where you, you know, that, that call gets taken care of and that information from that call for the, we talk about records management system or even the jail management system. And making sure that information gets all the way through that process and gets to any of your partner agencies that needs that information and be able to follow up on that. Now, a lot of times those are, I just depicted those as kind of individual silos and in some places they may still exist that way. But what we want to try to do is work where that information flows seamlessly from when the call comes in all the way through. The other depiction here is the reason I broke that up is to show right now what we're looking at is you essentially have thirty-eight separate independently operated ecosystems that we just went through. And what we want to, that work on twenty-four seven, what we want to work on is trying to bring those thirty-eight systems back into where it is one. Now, I want to emphasize clearly at this point, we are in no doubt coming in to say we are going to come back in and Vermont should have one PSAP, one dispatch system. That is not at all what I've advocated. What I'm advocating is is making sure that all, even though those thirty-eight may still exist when we get done, included with the PSAPs, there may be options that we provide to the, to the task force to determine. But no way, sense or form that we're, we are advocating that we're going to bring all this back and the state of Vermont is going to have this one system, it's going to provide for the whole state. I don't think that's feasible and it's not, not the best way forward. So I just want to make that very clear. Sometimes with the depiction of graphics, it can be misunderstood that we're, we're advocating for one system solution. That's not it. The point of that is even though you may have those thirty-eight, what we need to make sure to do is that they can seamlessly move that information back and forth between each other so that the responder gets to the right location and takes care of the public, which is what we're supposed to be doing, correct? So want to make that very clear. So let's get into the project overview itself of the statewide public safety communication system planning. This slide, again, you have seen before, it's a high level overview, you got phase one in the upper left there and then phase two. There is phase three still on here, phase three is not part of this contract at this point. That's going to be something that we may, we may or may not get to at the end, depending on where the task force wants to go. But the emphasis on this particular slide is the timeline. That is a projected timeline, I want to add that on there. We, we project out the timeline based upon you know, all of the essential elements of the project and trying to get through to deliver to you on time. We are already having discussions with your, your project management, Telebait and myself and MCP. If there is any point in this timeline that we can compress that timeline or shorten it or whatever the case may be, we will do that. In order to, obviously, there's a, there's obviously a save time and save money on that and that we can get, we can get that information to you in the same way. If there's a way, when we projected that timeline out, that we thought we might need more time here, we can, we can pull that back. And we can compress that timeline. Matter of fact, it's a discussion that Telebait and MCP is having already with the timeline to see if there's, if there's any ways that we can compress that or shorten up. Project initiation. I call this the honeymoon phase is where we start off on, on our honeymoon is we're establishing our mutual acquaintance, clarify roles. And then align our outcomes and deliverables and mutual understanding. We've had a lot of meetings, this is already occurring with, with the task force, with Telebait and MCP, with the particular individuals of the task force, where we're just making sure that everybody understands the roles and how this is going to go forward. But this is already happening and moving forward. You can see there a list, virtual project introduction kickoff meeting that has already occurred. And we're doing one of those today, the onsite, I say onsite project kickoff meeting, it may not necessarily be a kickoff meeting again, but we will be providing onsite. We have to, we need to come there to get that gathered information. And then the scheduling coordination of progress calls, this is already occurring. Where we'll jump into is a phase one data collection analysis. The data collection is going to be huge, it's important, it's, it's, it's the way that we are able to get that reported, get the proper information to give you options and models about how you can go forward. So we're going to do that through existing research and state initiatives and we've got several reports already. One, it is, it is great to come to a state that a lot of work has already been done, makes our job a little somewhat easier with the report that has already been developed and a lot of the stakeholder information and all the information to put together. But we also will go out and do those site visits. I was just talking about inventory and benchmark, all of the communication center of the system and services. Now, either we'll do that onsite and then going into the third bullet, if we can't get onsite, there'd be surveys and questionnaires to the stakeholders about gathering additional information. Yeah, you have the, we are going to do our best. I think there's going to be about a two-week timeframe that we're going to spend onsite. But there's always going to be additional questions and information. You can't gather everything in two weeks, especially about the entire state of Vermont and the entire system. So we'll gather as much as we can, but just be prepared that we may have follow-up questions as we go along. And then we will use alternative data collection methods as needed. However, we need to get this information, we'll try to make it the best and and easiest for whoever that may be to provide that information. Once we collect it, we're going to analyze all that information. That's where we just, we just get it all back together as a team. We start to analyze what is going on. Part of that collection method goes into how we do the stakeholder outreach strategy workflow. You see the picture there, we have talked about this before, we have a strategy about how we go out and do the outreach on our part, which is what actually works really well for us and what has been helpful so far is that Telebait is already there and in place. And a lot of the stakeholder outreach has been developed by them. Dominic and I have already had discussions about our cooperatives, about how we're going to go forward with that. But that makes our job a little bit easier that we don't have to develop this from scratch, basically. A lot of that information is already there. Soliciting information, we're going to talk about that in the next slide. And then of course, cataloging that, cataloging that information basically comes down to, we gather that information in order to put the, you know, put the proper elements of the information into the report itself. Barbara, you and I talked about this a little bit yesterday about the nine-one-one board. Now granted, they're not specifically addressed here, but I look at it under, they do kind of fall under the communications. I know communications and nine-one-one can be a little different, but we can put a slash there. But the point of that is across the top is we want to talk to our local and state officials, the EMS and fire, law enforcement, communications, even the public and of course, we have an IT and radio staff portion of that here. Now, they may not be all separated up because a lot of times they're EMS and fire and law enforcement may be all together. Communications is slash nine-one-one may be together as well. The point of that is, is just to show you, this is conceptual where, how we will go out and gather that information. You know, sixty-one-on-one interviews, focus groups, listening sessions, town halls, the PSAPs are radio, the PSAPs and the communication centers and the radio sites, that's, that's the piece we want to get to and have some onsite and some discussions with that, those personnel. And then outside of that, if we have to do surveys and questionnaires and any other alternative data collection methods. Point here is, is we have a strategy about how to gather the information. We know the, the people that we need to talk to. And whenever things do come up, like what we talked about yesterday, Barbara, with the nine-one-one board specifically, if we need to conduct a separate meeting with the nine-one-one board specifically to get their input on that, then we'll do that. And we'll, we'll gather that information as we go along. Phase two is going to be a little bit further down the road, but the part of that is, is once we gather that all information and we analyze that, phase two internally to the company sometimes is what we call is our quiet time. And I use that term as, and you may not hear from the company as much as the company and the team as much because at this point, that's where we're sitting down, trying to go, okay, how would we design this? What is the best way to go forward? Whatever, what are the options that Vermont has available? And, and giving you different courses of action that you may take on how you want to go forward. This also is a period of time that where if we didn't gather, if we didn't get a piece of information, where we may send out individual requests to the task force members or where people, you know, members of the public and or all the way down to the agencies just gathering some additional information that we may not have gotten when we were on scene or onsite. What you see there is what we, when we get done with that is that we put that together to give you actionable steps, estimated task durations about how that long that may or may not take for you, and then how will we deliver it? We won't just finish the report and deliver it to you and say, here you go. We put together a draft report. It goes to the task force, the task force gets like a preliminary look at the report. And if you have any questions or something doesn't look right or that, or it's completely wrong, whatever it is that we may have assessed that is not right whatsoever. That's the point where you get that draft and you get it upfront so you can provide us information and or back. And if we miss something for some reason or something that needs to be clarified, that gives us time to be able to go back and get that, get that rectified if necessary. And then there'll be a final report. So we won't just dump it on you and walk away, let's put it that way. But there's, this is a partnership and we want to make sure that you get what you get the correct report and correct information. Okay, here comes the homework assignment, defining success. What this is at this point, I would like to get, what helps us with that is to be able to get information back from the task force about what you define is going to be successful for this going forward. And the reason we ask the individual members is because the individual members have, you have different reasons, different goals and objectives, different thoughts about how you wanted to see this go forward, about where you're at at this point. So what that gives us is to be able to, when we know the task force members, even though it's an individual to you, but we can compile that information as part of the analysis. It helps us drive how the plan is going to go forward and how we develop the plan. So from here, this is where I kind of kick off where you don't have to listen to me talk anymore. And I'm going to kick it back to you. I know Barbara has a plan here about how we're going to walk through some of the members and hopefully you've been prepped up and got something prepared. So Barbara, I will kick it to you on who gets to go first.
Okay, so I've drawn the straws here on my side. So the question for the task force members is how, how do we individually and for our constituents define success? So Jim Mack, can I put you on the spot and start with you?
I guess so. For me, it's the human element in the equation here. Recruiting, training, retaining adequate staffing at our communication centers and implementing and utilizing technologies to improve the efficiencies of that staff.
Great. Great, how about you, Ron?
Um, I, I, I see this project as, as sort of multifaceted. I, I think one of the things that we need to get out of this somehow is to direct the legislature to a model that more effectively pays for dispatching. For years, I espoused the idea that the only fair way to do this is to unburden the taxpayers and to, to put surcharges on phones. But apparently the governor thinks that's a new tax and we'll have to revisit that. Now, on the, on the, the dispatch communication side from the fire perspective, we have a horrible hodgepodge of things going on. But the other part is that we, we can't simply like other states replace it with a P twenty-five trunk angstum because the, the bottom line is that local or regional control is, is very important to the way that we do business. And the other part is that P twenty-five subscriber units are far too expensive for the vast majority of fire departments in the state of Vermont, some of which, you know, their communications budget wouldn't even make one repair to a P twenty-five subscriber unit. So I envision this resulting in a sort of a quilt of frequency diverse, simulpath voting systems that are under regional control. And you know, that of course is subject to change, if you can change my opinion, but that, that's where I am at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Mike Dungeons, how about you?
Sure, and I'll apologize in advance for any background noise. I'm not in a good, good spot, so to speak. But um, so mine, it might be a little higher level, right? So my, my definition of success is a document and a resulting set of suggestions and guidelines for policy process and, and as as I think it was Ron that said, billing and how we could possibly charge and bill for a regional dispatch solution that all Vermont communities can participate in. And I know that seems very high level and probably not enough specifics for you, Grant. But the idea, the idea basically being that broad strokes nature of the, the way we're going to operate, whether it's in both Barb and and that, I'm going to say probably, probably pretty much everybody on this committee has seen the successes and failures in the Vermont systems. And we'd like to see those successes highlighted and used again, not necessarily a complete from scratch plan. So really taking into effect where we've had those successes in the past and making sure that those continue to be core fundamental pieces of the project as we move forward.
Great, thank you. And let's see, Michael Wright is still not here. So Paul White, let's go to you.
Okay. Actually, I'd like to give a couple of examples of what's wrong. And then from that, you can take what, what I see as success. So one example is I got a phone call a couple of days ago from the chief of the Norwich Vermont Police Department. Norwich is a fairly small town on the New Hampshire border. Bedroom community of Dartmouth College, you know, they're not a poor town by any means, but they're frugal. And like many departments in Vermont, they're struggling with staffing. So at the moment, the department is comprised of the chief and one officer, when normally they should have two or three times that number. He was calling to find out, you know, what can he hope to gain out of this task force's work? Because right now he's having to pay Hartford a hundred thousand dollars a year to dispatch his two officers, including himself. Their fire department and their public works are dispatched by Hanover, New Hampshire. And Hanover would be more than happy to take on the police department for much less money. But because of the interstate issues with, you know, NCIC and, and state databases, VCIC won't allow them to be dispatched, to dispatch a police department by an out-of-state dispatch agency. So he's, he's struggling with a hundred thousand dollars a year for dispatching for two officers. Whereas his next door neighbor in Thetford, because they're one of those grandfathered departments, is dispatched by the state police for free. They pay absolutely nothing. Thetford also has their public works and fire dispatched by Hanover, so they have a similar fractured dispatching environment, but they're paying nothing for police dispatching, whereas right next door, they're paying a hundred thousand dollars. So that's one example. The second example is the town of Berlin. Berlin's police department similarly is dispatched for free by the state. Its fire department is dispatched by, I believe, the city of Mont, either Berry City or Montpelier for, for a cost. And their EMS is provided by the town of Berry, which gets its dispatching from La Moyole County. So they're awful, there's a cost there. So it's just this, this fragmented environment we have where we have three or four different disciplines in a community, all dispatched by different entities. There's very poor communication between them. You know, if we have a crash on the interstate in Berlin, you're going to get police dispatched by the state police, you're going to get fire dispatched by the city of Montpelier and you're going to ambulance dispatched by La Moyole and they don't, don't all necessarily talk to each other. And then there's my community where I live, we I'm just going to mute him here.
Okay.
My community, we're a fairly large, larger town, but yet we have, you know, our police department is an eight-person department. We have a volunteer police department, but we have a very active EMS department. We get our dispatching from the La Moyole County Sheriff's Department, which is an entirely different county because we weren't happy with any of the services being offered locally. And I was trying to find how much we pay for that and I couldn't find it, but it's a lot of money. So I guess my, what I see as success is options, communities having options so that they're not locked into having to deal with just one dispatch agency, whether they like them or not. Then back to the Norwich example where he's paying Hartford. He's, he's not unhappy with the service necessarily, but he has no control over the governance, you know. Hartford chief dictates the rules and if you either like it or you don't. He has no control over the price. And we're kind of in the same boat. We're very happy with the service we get from La Moyole, but if suddenly we became unhappy, you know, we're just, we're a customer, we don't have any input on what we're billed or how the system is run. And then the my third, I guess my third idea of success is financial equity. You know, you have some communities getting dispatching for free, whereas others are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for it.
Very good. Very good. I think that'll give Rance lots to work with. Um, interesting. Um, okay, let's go to Jen Morrison.
All right. Thanks, Barb. Uh, and thanks, everybody who's said many things that I agree with. Uh, success to me looks like a process that has robust public engagement that allows all stakeholders and interested parties to be heard and all voices equally valued. Uh, I don't want this to be squeaky wheels, get the most attention, and I certainly don't want this to be a law enforcement centric exercise. This has to be uh, whether those that that's the first responder community or interested parties, all voices should be valued equally. Um, success looks to me like having multiple solutions, viable solutions to consider at the end of of the, well, not at the end, but at the point where proposals are being made that we have multiple viable paths forward to consider. I absolutely agree with what Paul just said and Ron also said about doing away with the financial inequity in the existing system. And I mean that not just in who pays for what, like the like Paul was mentioning that some agencies are receiving service for free from the state police right now. But I also mean that in what Ron was mentioning, that there should be a a base, a base level of equipment and security measures that all first responders should have access to, and that implicates having funding available to them regardless of the wealth of their community. Um, because I I don't think that when it comes to the safety of our first responder community, that their equipment uh, should put them at risk be just because they come from a financially uh, less capable community. So I would like to see some financial uh, equity in in how the service gets paid for, but also in what equipment first responders have available to them. Uh, obviously, success looks to me like meeting all the requirements of Act seventy eight and making sure that we've been diligent and honored the legislative intent of this process. Um, and then most importantly, that the solutions that we are uh, considering the ones that the possible paths forward that come to us. Um, that whatever we decide upon after all of the input process is something that enhances the safety of the public and our first responder community. Um, because at the end of the day, if we're not enhancing those things, then we're not then we've just reshuffled the seats on the deck on the Titanic, right? So that that's what it looks like to me. I'm sure I've missed a few things that I'll think of later, but I'll send them to Rance if I did.
Very good. Um, so I chose to go last for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is I could just say ditto to everything that's already been been said, but I will read to you what I wrote, which I think is um, is has been covered um, by all the other input, which um, is encouraging. So in the end, success for me is defined by meeting all of the requirements of Act seventy eight. And the production of multiple potential models for a statewide public safety communication system that is solidly based on industry standards and best practices, both for technology and for operations. Uh, that is reliably and sustainably funded. And that has considered and incorporated to the greatest extent possible, the needs of Vermont's emergency communication centers, emergency response agencies, the personnel within all of those centers and agencies, um, as well as a system that will best serve Vermonters and our visitors. So that is my two cents, Rance. I'll hand it back to you. I hope we've given um, you something to work with.
That was great. I was, I really appreciate it. And uh, homework assignment is if I was a teacher, y'all did great. I I you got you did better than probably try to get my children to do their homework and go back to schools and sell. So uh, appreciate that. That's good. That gives us a a great direction, gives us information. And and again, that's why we go over, we ask that question because it helps us keep aligned to, uh, I mean, we we have legislative alignment. I know everybody referenced Act seventy eight. We got to meet that. That's that's required. And 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 we get that. And then we have what was in the RFP, which you're looking for as a task force, but there's also the the just the element of what people think. Their their opinions and their thoughts and about what they've what they've dealt with individually across their different experiences. So uh, I will, Barbara, I will ask kind of a second half of this. Does any of the task force members have any particular questions that they want to ask uh, of MCP or of me at this point?
Watching for hands. I'm not seeing any, but I'm not seeing everybody very clearly. So task force members, if you have a comment or a question, um, speak now.
This is speak now or forever hold your peace thing, or can we just wait until later?
No, I I I'm sure there'll be other opportunities for discussion, Ron. Thanks for checking, though.
That's true. I thought this is the end. I'll be all that we have. We no more questions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm kidding. I am kidding. I'm very kidding. I you're you're, sir, you're right. If you don't have any right now, I always, I always know with these meetings that um, and Commissioner Morrison actually said it, you'll always think of something that you wanted to say after you get off the call. Perfectly acceptable, you know, roll those emails up uh, to to Barbara or Commissioner Morrison, and I know they'll get them to us. Uh, I believe if I understood right, Ron, you're one of the fire chiefs, we will probably be meeting with you anyway. When we get there, I would imagine it's probably on our our list of people to talk to. So there'd be another opportunity right there. Um, the if this this is not the end, if you have questions or you think of something, because I got a couple more slides, but we're kind of wrapping it up. If you think of something, then jump in there and ask me. Next step, uh, we're going to jump to that, kind of finish off as far as we, this is our official, you know, kickoff meeting. It's what the meeting was for to say we're we're driving forward and we already we have already shown that, you know, a lot of these things are already occurring between us and Telebate, and we will be uh, driving on from there. However, some of the next things are at least the the more immediate issues and some bigger ones, stakeholder representatives. All that is there to uh, to depict is we have a lot of the stakeholders already. Uh, Telebate again has already done a lot of the groundwork and pulled that a lot of pull a lot of that information together. I know between a conversation Dominic and I've had, uh, that is going to be a continuous process. There's uh, there's still some information to be gathered, but the point of that meeting is we still need to have those stakeholder representatives. It's going to be very important, especially when we get on onsite to, you know, having that nailed down to have everybody that we possibly can. Uh, establish product, project progress calls. A lot of that is going to probably wind up being between MCP, myself and Dominic, the project project manager for Telebate. Uh, we have spoken. And I know we need to establish and and he and I'll get together that as far as establish a a rhythm or a sync on when we're going to talk and or deliver information. So we'll get that taken care of. Uh, from there, we're going to go into the bigger things. We we on the MCP side will start to develop our inventory schedule and assessment schedule, which that bullet rolls right into the next bullet. If one of those schedules are are established or we get those developed, then that'll that'll start to roll into where we will actually come back to you and say, hey, y'all, we're coming onsite between here and there. And I just realized I said you all that I apologize. That is a that is a Missouri thing or from where I'm at at this point. So you all, we will be there to do onsite with you guys. Uh, and then the bullet point that always stands is identify any outstanding issues or expectations. There's always going to be something that's going to pop up or creep up. Uh, to to elevate may find it, MCP may find it, and then where the task force members may find it. By all means, get that information to us. We want to make sure to cover that and don't miss anything as we go on. Uh, question slide, which I'll just kick it to the last one. This is the, this is the end of the actual presentation on my part. I will kick it back if there's any questions or comments from the task force members. And Barbara, I think I will pass it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Rance. Um, well, task force members can continue to think of questions or comments at this point, but I do want to give um, Rick and Dom from Telebate an opportunity to um, also ask questions or offer comments um, to Mission Critical. So Rick, Dom, anything to add?
Uh, I don't have anything additional, Barb. As uh, Rance mentioned, uh, we've been uh, started communicating and have been uh, working on the uh, various aspects to help get mission uh, critical partners uh, moving. So uh, I don't have anything further.
Okay, great.
Yes, I'd like to say so far, so good. I I think, you know, we've been sharing information as you know, as the task force just has has done. And and we've been in communication with Rand sharing information. You know, yesterday after we talked about Valcor, you know, I sent him information about the Valcor CAD and 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 what we've learned about its abilities or lack of abilities so far. So, you know, this, this is all going to be ongoing and we're 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 get, we'll get a cadence going. Um, and I have already established that. So I I think also what I appreciated from hearing from the task force is something that Dom and I have learned over the number of years of working um, within the state is that there are very diverse capabilities throughout the state and there's a there are a lot of strengths and 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 there are a number of needs. And and so I think, you know, this program is going to identify them statewide because they they definitely are are vary from, you know, from one one county of the state, one city of the state to another. Um, and the impact of the towns having to pay for dispatching, I think that was really clear. So you know, the idea that the towns and 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 also are paying to for their dispatch services. So I like the idea of Barbara finding a, you know, a funding mechanism so that they can, we can be, these programs can be sustainable. I I I'm sure that will be a benefit. Um, so I I I think that there's already a good understanding uh, within the the short amount of time that the MCP has been engaged in hearing about the needs from the state that there they'll get a handle on it and Dom and I will certainly um, assist them um, and and through however needed to, so that we're all successful and that we meet the needs of the Act seventy eight and beyond.
Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Rance, I see your hand is up. Go ahead.
I did. I sorry, I I would be remiss if I didn't give my partner in crime an opportunity to uh, say something if he had something to offer from MCP. Phil.
Uh, well, thanks, Rance. Uh, I I would say nothing at this time. I I was, I did make notes. I was very, I know you guys uh, record this and we have um, uh, a record of it, but I I was very impressed with the thought that you guys all put into the comments about what success looks like and also the diversity, which I think is, you know, the means, uh, the the goal behind the task force, right? Why we have different people from different walks of life at different areas of public safety is to get that diversity of responses and try and blend that all together to improve public safety in the state. So that's what really impressed me with the answers.
Right? Thank you very much. Um, okay, back to task force members. Uh, Jen, I know you have um, uh, some comments, so why don't you go ahead and then uh, anyone else who cares to comment from the task force will be fine.
Great. Um, we can, I suspect these are things that will flush out in more detail as as we move the work moves on, but things that pop in my mind as I think about the work getting started are um, can you share, it doesn't have to be today, but as we move towards this, can you share in a little more detail how we're going to identify dead zones? Like what what is the process for identifying them? Um, and then when we think about beginning the outreach to the existing communication centers that you're going to visit and do an inventory as required by Act seventy eight. I think we need to be able to frame that discussion when we make the connection or or an ask of a communication center and be clear about what information that they're about to share with us. Uh, what what part of that information is public versus what part is confidential? Um, I can tell you from the state's perspective, I am not keen to see every single LMR asset that we have publicly out there. I mean, I just think that invites uh, problems and saboteurs. So I think that we do have to put some thought into what pieces of the inventory or or mapping or anything else are going to be uh, fully accessible by the public and which are going to be for official use only by the task force and its contracted vendors. So I don't have an answer to that, but I don't think we should call up a Burlington PD and say we're going to come inventory everything. We need to know every Hilltop and every repeater and every everything and then have them not and not have an answer to the question of and what are you doing with that information? Thanks, Barb.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a really good point. We can do some some work in advance, I think, on identifying those those things because we would have the same concerns at the at the nine one one board about, you know, system um, information and what can be public and what cannot. Um, okay, anything else from task force members for Mission Critical? Paul, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just back to success, you know, I've had realized afterwards, I got all wrapped up in my examples and left out one of probably the one of the most important things is is um, redundancy, you know, like in the in the case of my community, we get our dispatching from sheriff's department in a neighboring county. Um, and if they suddenly experience some kind of a catastrophic failure and just like cease to exist, you know, our nine one one calls will still get answered by a CPSP somewhere else in the state. However, I'm not confident they have the ability to flip a switch and have our radio communications and our regular, you know, seven digit phone numbers forward to a neighboring dispatch center. I don't think that exists. So we would be in radio silence other than nine one one. So some some system to to allow failover between dispatch centers.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Ron, go ahead.
Um, I I would actually like to add to what Paul just said. Um, you know, on the on the the fire side, we rely very heavily on a our our mutual aid partners and and our dispatch facility has a very good way of keeping track of our mutual aid plans. So as I'm putting my pants on, running out the door, trying to get the ice off my truck to get to the fire station, all my mutual aid partners are en route by the time I get anywhere near the scene. Um, so as we look at how to make our dispatch facilities redundant, that information all has to be accessible from any location that's able to answer our calls and dispatch our agencies. Um, and that that is absolutely critical.
Okay, good point. Excellent. Anything else from from task force members? Um, Rance, do you have any any closing, anything? Do you have what you need? Um, do we have more homework assignments?
Yes, there's definitely more homework coming, but we'll we'll uh, we'll parse that out as we as we get that put together. I know uh, uh, working with Dominic at Telebate, we'll have a lot of we'll have a lot of other homework for you to do eventually to get to get us down that path, but it's all good homework assignments because all that information helps us to be able to develop and tie in all those things that you guys just said. Uh, various comments were made and and they were all great. And I really appreciate that. That really helps us, gives us good direction to be able to go forward from there. So thank you very much.
Excellent. And and thank you very much for this overview of where we're going and uh, we're happy to be going there. Um, Jen, anything further from you?
No, nothing from me.
Okay, I think then that we are uh, done for today and ready to move on to um, adjourning. We do have a meeting on the books for next Wednesday, the twenty seventh, a regular meeting. Um, so we'll see everyone there if we don't talk before. Uh, so we we will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Jim. All in favor of adjourning, please raise your hand or indicate by saying aye. I see all hands are up and I'm hearing ayes from Ron and Jen. So we are adjourned. Thank you very much, uh, Mission Critical and Telebate and Callie and everyone for being here and uh, we'll talk to you all very soon. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your day.
Thank you.
Yeah, too. Bye bye.